Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting on Monday, April 27, 2020. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice at this meeting and Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on April 23, 2020 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Can everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the law. Thanks, everyone. Miss Tarnish, can I have a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Mr. Boulet?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Dr. Harris?
Here.
Mrs. Maroon?
Here.
Mr. Oliver? Gotcha, gotcha. You're here. Mr. Pulsofer?
Here.
Mrs. Stats?
I'm here, I'm sorry.
Thank you, it's all good. Uh, Mr. Heel?
Here.
And Dr. Soson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, we have minutes to approve for the, um, regular meeting on April 13th. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Judy.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any comments or questions or anything about the minute? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Seeing none?
Motion passed.
Thank you. We have correspondence as provided. Our, uh, we're going to change the agenda up just a little bit. We will have the public hearing on the, uh, 2021 budget, which, uh, Mr. Ramud will give in a minute, but I just wanted to let the public know that we will be taking public comments, uh, and pushing back the motion to approve the 2021 budget until after, um, our regular comment period from the board, which is item number nine. So you'll have ample time to provide comments. So with that, I will turn it over to, um, Mr. Ramud for the public hearing portion presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Soson. Um, so what I'm going to do is go over our, uh, budget presentation. Uh, so the first thing I'd like to do is, uh, move over to, uh, slide number two. Thank you. And I want to talk a little bit about the budget calendar, which we had done in the past with the tentative budget. In October, we began our public input at board meetings, and we also distributed all our allocations to our budget managers during, um, for input during October and November. In December, both myself and Mrs. Angiuliano reviewed all budget with our budget managers, and we looked for efficiencies at that time and worked with them individually. In January, Dr. Intunes, myself, and Ms. Angiuliano reviewed the budget, um, and prepared for the first committee view, which was the February committee meetings. In February, we did have our committee meetings where we had our budget managers individually, uh, present their budgets. We then, in February, also received our state aid allocation, and the DOE budget software became available for our budget to be entered. In March, our board committees reviewed the draft tentative budget for approval of the March 16 tentative budget. We continued after that to go back for committee input, and in April, we did several other committee meetings. We had some suggestions and some ideas, and we came up with what we're presenting tonight, which is our final budget, uh, that will be approved hopefully tonight and submitted to the county once again, and also our user-friendly budget will be up on our website by law within the next 48 hours. Slide number three. Some of our opening thoughts. Uh, we would like to thank our board. We know that the budget process is monotonous, and, uh, we do bring the committees out more often than usual, and we bombard them with lots of budget information. So we'd like to thank our board. We'd like to thank our budget managers, uh, for all the help in putting this together with us. Um, and also, we'd like to thank Dr. Intunes, who, uh, gave Ms. Angiuliano and myself an opportunity, uh, to really kind of think outside the box and be creative in developing this budget. Her, um, her mission to us was to basically make sure that we deliver a realistic budget, and, uh, the less harm to people, uh, the better. So to try to save jobs, balance our budget, and maintain what we have, and, uh, we appreciate her giving us that ability to be creative. We also want to thank our APA and our HPSA for helping us to realize savings while providing quality healthcare. Uh, they work with us on, uh, the healthcare. Our provider. On tonight's budget, uh, on tonight's agenda, you'll see that the final budget is up for a vote, and you'll also see that where withdrawing money, there will be another resolution in the operations budget, or, or section of the, um, agenda that talks about capital reserve withdrawal for summer athletic projects, which I'll discuss later in this presentation. Our goals, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, some I, I pertained to when I spoke to, uh, about Dr. Intunes' mission to us, to maintain current programs, try to maintain all our existing positions, minimize significant appropriation reductions for all our budget managers, um, provide a thorough and efficient education to all students, decrease class size where possible, increase professional development. As you know, last year, we took away, um, with the massive budget cuts last year, professional development was almost down to zero, if not zero. And also utilize our reserves where possible without putting the district in harm's way. Um, you know, you've got to be careful, there is a balance when you look at reserves, and what we're presenting in this budget, I believe, is a fair balance between reserves and also, uh, the mission and the goals that I just spoke about. Next slide is slide number five. Slide number five just shares with, with the public, uh, our enrollment, um, based on the ASSA, which is a report that we have to submit to the Department of Education. I'm just going to go over the highlights, uh, which is the total differences. So last year's October 15, 2018, um, enrollment of the district was 7,411.5 students, and this year's October enrollment was 7,445.5. So we're looking at a slight increase of students of 34 students based on ASSA, and that's how we receive our allocation, is based on that report. Slide number six. Slide number six shows us a budget overview, and what that slide shows is, uh, the big buckets of money in our budget. For example, our general fund compared to last year is going up by 4.7 mil, but bear, uh, bear in mind that that, 1.3 million of that is inflated by cap reserve. So in essence, we have to post it that way, but we're not really going up by the 4.7 because the cap reserve money is already there, but that's something to keep in mind. Also, when we looks at, when we look at grants and entitlements, uh, bear in mind that we're budgeting at 85%. So in essence, in 2021, there will be an increase in that, in grants and entitlement because we're only budgeting currently at 85. We're required to do that by law, uh, otherwise we would, that number would be slightly higher. Our debt service is also, um, that's actually decreasing from one year to another, but I want to make sure that the public knows that this does not include the referendum. So as we said, uh, you know, the referendum projects haven't started, our, well, they, we've started the, the bidding and the work will be starting this summer, but the note hasn't been taken on yet, so bear that in mind. And there will be that overlap year next year where, when we presented the referendum, the debt service was a little bit higher one year, and then it went down, so bear that in mind. Our loss of state aid on this chart shows that, um, we basically lost last year 526,000. We were slotted to lose about a million plus, however, we were, we lost 745,119 of state aid, which is a lot of money for a school district our size. Our positions cut in, in 1920, we cut 56 positions, which was horrible. This year, we are cutting no positions. We are proposing no cuts to any position. Slide number seven. You may ask yourself, what are the changes between the last time we presented this and today, which is the tentative to final budget? The one thing that I mentioned earlier was we are withdrawing from cap reserve approximately 1.3 million dollars to resurface the track and the tennis courts at the high school. We had major discussions with our athletic department about the track and also the tennis courts. The, the resurfacing of the track is not only its useful life has expired, it becomes a danger, um, to our students and any visitors on our track. We tried to patch it, and unfortunately, uh, the useful life is way, way extended on it, so doing that and taking money out of reserves for that and the high school tennis courts are essential. The work is expected to occur during the summer of 2020 and completed, uh, during this, between the 2021 athletic season. Also, we, uh, changes between tentative and final is an extensive savings in the healthcare. We all know that we, um, that the last board meeting, we, um, there was a motion to rescind, we moved, uh, we were going to move into state health benefits, but, uh, our current provider, Private Horizon, was able to, uh, net us, uh, an equivalent savings, and we decided to stay with the current Horizon plan and with the savings that we yielded from that plan. Slide number eight. We're going to talk about, um, the highlights on the revenue side only first. Um, so we did increase our budget by, uh, the 2% cap. The district did not and is unable to take any additional waivers. For example, we are not taking a health benefits waiver or an enrollment adjustment waiver. We are just going to the 2% cap. As I mentioned earlier, the reduction in state aid was originally projected at a million 69,836. Uh, we endured a 745,000, uh, 745,119 dollar, uh, state aid cut, which is still significant for us. Uh, in order to, as I mentioned when we talked about reserves, last year was the first year that the district was able to deposit money in maintenance reserve. We deposited 500,000 dollars. We created the account, and we deposited it. This year, we're going to withdraw the money out of maintenance reserve, and that'll allow us to use the operating budget for the Buildings and Grounds Department. Uh, this is totally within bounds. It's a creative way to use money that we ascertained last year in order to balance this year's budget through reserve. We talked about the withdrawal from cap reserve, which is a million point three, and I, I just want to mention the reserve monies because some people will ask, you know, you're taking these monies, couldn't you pay for more of, on the operating side? For example, can't you do more class size reductions, et cetera? The answer is no. These reserves are just that, they're reserves for categories. So when we go through this budget, bear in mind, the maintenance reserve can only be used for buildings and grounds and maintenance. A capital reserve can only be used for a capital project. As far as the revenue with pay-to-play and building usage fees, we will not be increasing any of those fees, we will be keeping them as is. Our technology chrome insurance will decrease from $60 to $45. And our technology summer chrome brick rental will also decrease from $40 to $25. We can go to slide nine, please. So the main budget drivers in this particular budget, um, 76% of our general fund budget is attributed to salary and benefits. 6% of our general fund budget goes to transportation. 3% goes to, uh, special education, and 4% goes to the Buildings and Grounds Department. We just wanted to give everybody an overview of the main budget drivers. We can go to slide 10. Thank you. We're going to highlight some of our appropriation side or the expenditure sides. Um, as I mentioned before, we do have that extensive savings with our healthcare. We also were able to, on the appropriation side, we haven't done this in a long time, we're funding a curriculum in a way we haven't done before. In this case, it's the math curriculum revision, and we're extremely proud of that. Uh, usually, curriculum instruction is an area that we reduce, and this year, we are not reducing it, and we are proud that we're able to invest in the curriculum revision. Also, uh, we want to bear in mind that we are taking out some contingencies that we put in, in the past. Last year, we put in a significant amount of contingency. This year, we, we were able with a high level of comfort to reduce that contingency, um, in about half as much as we put last year. We're also adding a special, a couple of special ed positions, including two full-time teachers, one part-time teacher, and one instructional assistant, and all of these are based on IEP mandates. We are keeping with our technology plan, and we're excited about that because that is an initiative we took on years ago, and in order to do so in our technology plan, we are refreshing our staff devices, and we are also changing all of our, we, um, we're, we're actually buying new classroom projectors for all our K to 8 grade, uh, classrooms. Uh, those projectors have been there a long time, they've extended their useful life, and we are, um, this, in order to fix those and to find supplies and materials, uh, it's just, it's, it's unbelievably costly, and we, we just don't have a vendor that can do that for us, so, um, it is, it's, it's good that we're able to keep with our technology plan. We are increasing our substitute budget to match our actual expenditures in the past. Uh, this was sort of a, a number that we always would wind up transferring money into the substitute budget. This year, we will be not doing that, we're, we're actually making it match real expenditures, and we've done a history of what our expenditures look like. We are adding, um, the accounts payable and the, a point five and a point five transportation assistant position. Both are, um, a reflection of some struggles we've had in the transportation department, uh, and we're trying to work with, uh, just getting control of some of the latencies on some of our routes, uh, and with the accounts payable, it's simply, uh, I think the board and the administration, uh, I think we bit off more than we can chew by bringing accounts payable down to one person as opposed to two or 1.5. So restoring, uh, a full-time position in those categories was necessary to keep operations afloat. We are also accounting for breakage, uh, we are putting some money, we know that we will have X amount of dollars in breakage, so we are putting monies aside for that. Uh, and lastly, on this slide, there is a reduction in the Buildings and Grounds budget, and that's not necessarily, um, because of reductions in line items, it's basically our, uh, Energy Savings Improvement Man, uh, Plan, the lease payments, uh, based on the amortization table, has, uh, decreased. So there will be an overall reduction in that department's budget. Slide number 11 out of 123, I got only 100 to go. It's going to be, we'll be here for a little bit. Slide number 11, um, also talks about highlights on the expenditure side. Subscription and courtesy busing will remain the same. There are no changes, there's no additions and no subtractions. We are very excited about the purchasing of five new buses for a net savings of over 130,000 dollars. Uh, what that does for us is not only does it, um, help us in our quest to get our routes on time, uh, both, uh, school and home, it also lets the folks out there and our contractors know that the district means business. We, we really have, um, we've gotten to a point where we don't, you know, we're losing control of some of the contractors where they're not delivering, you know, our students on time, and, um, we feel that this is the first approach we, as you know, we purchased three buses last year, uh, and we continue to go down that route so that we can make our transportation as efficient as possible. Uh, we are replacing, uh, two transportation vans for special needs children. Those are vans that are unfortunately have exceeded their useful life, and, uh, it's costing us too much money to repair these things, they're actually, they're not even functioning at the moment, so, uh, we need them for our special needs students. There is an increase in our charter school appropriations, um, which are requirement that we put money aside for that, so the district is putting over 100,000 dollars aside out of money we can be using on the public side. There are two additional teaching positions in this budget, which again, we're very proud of, uh, to help reduce class sizes, and we, while we haven't established the exact grade levels, uh, we do know that those two positions will be available. As I mentioned before, there's an increase in, in staff training and professional development, which we're also proud of. Uh, with the help of Mr. Handler and the Technology Department, we were able to save over 20,000 dollars in our copier lease expenditures, so we, uh, currently are working with a state contract, and we got, um, prices that are even lower than the state contract. And finally, on this slide, we are going to limit the amount of summer work that we're doing. Uh, that is the plan for the budget, as we, we don't know what the future holds in the summer at the moment, but we do know that the budget is going to restrict the amount of work that we do in the summer. If we can go to slide 12, please? Thank you. We want to talk about the tax impact, um, again, something to be proud of, and it's not necessarily all of our work, the, the ratables did go up, uh, which helps us. Um, so the Hillsborough tax rate for 2020 is 1.588. It's a decrease from 2019 where the tax rate was at 1.598. So the average household, and by the way, this is for a home that was assessed at the same value it was last year, we got to make sure that's clear. And an average home, an average household of 414,300, will see a tax decrease for the school taxes of $41 per year, and that's $3 a month. But once again, the second year in a row, school taxes for the Hillsborough Township residents have gone down. That is in Hillsborough. For the Millstone school tax rate, in 2020, this particular year, the tax rate is 1.568. In 2019, uh, we decreased, we went from 1.873, so there was another decrease in the tax rate, and the average household of 331,196 will see a tax decrease of 1,010 dollars per year, and that's $84 a month. I, I don't think Millstone has ever been in a tax decrease, uh, scenario, but they are this year, so it will be seeing a tax decrease. As I mentioned earlier, the footnotes here is that this does, this impact on taxation, uh, for, especially for debt service, uh, the referendum for, that was passed on December 10th, um, will not, is not impacted in this particular analysis. It will be in 2020, 21, it's the year of the overlap, as we presented when we went around to talk about the referendum, and in 22, 23, and through 2041, the tax impact for the debt services will basically be all the new debt that we have. Um, and it'll be lower than the existing debt as we presented, uh, months ago during the December referendum. That is the tax impact. Uh, if we can go to the next slide. Which is slide number 13. Uh, this is an, uh, we are required by law to meet with our county superintendent, and we go over, uh, the Dr. Intunes, myself, and Ms. Angiuliano get invited to the county office, and we go over the budget, uh, prior year budget and what the future budget would look like as we start to develop this. In this case, it was the 2020, 21 budget. And, um, while we received a letter from the executive county superintendent, you know, we highlight a lot of these wonderful things, but I, these things do catch up to us, so I'm going to share some of them, and while they're, um, perceived as good things, I, I have to agree to a certain extent they are, but eventually it catches up to us. For example, um, I'm going to look at the second bullet. Uh, when we look at faculty to administration ratio is significantly greater than the state median, we're ranked third out of 101 K to 12 districts. When we look at classroom instruction purchase services, uh, per pupil costs, we were significantly less than the state median. We were ranked second out of 101 K to 12 districts. Students to administration ratio was greater than the state average, we ranked seventh out of 101 K to 12 districts. Legal services, hey Vic, how are you? We were, uh, less than the state median, we ranked 12th of the 101 districts K to 12, uh, so we ranked 12 on legal services cost. Operations and, uh, maintenance plant per pupil costs were less than the state median, and we ranked 13th out of 101. So we, uh, the district continues to work to decrease the academic disparity that exists among subgroups, i.e., economically disadvantaged, English language learners, and special education students. Move on to slide 12. This is the conclusion of our presentation, a few, two, two notes. Uh, next year, we are anticipating, um, a re-state aid reduction of 1.3 million dollars. Um, and this number, this is very important for everybody out there to know, this number was projected prior to the COVID-19 pandemic, so unfortunately, we don't know what that's going to bring when it comes to state aid reductions, we don't know what that looks like. We know that we're slotted for the 1.3 reduction, uh, we don't know what the future is going to bring, uh, moving forward. We, we can recognize realistically that all revenues statewide are going down, so that's just, we, we have to, we have to think about that. Uh, we will continue to work with our legislators to try to, um, receive additional state aid or, or, um, or try to advocate for a du, a reduction in our, or actually a reduction in our, uh, decrease in state aid. So we'll work with them as well to see if we can advocate for Hillsborough. That, uh, Dr. Soson and Dr. Intunes, it concludes our presentation on the final budget for 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Ramud. Um, I, I am going to open it up to the, uh, the floor and to the board now and remind, um, the public that there is a Google form on the district website, should be below where you're watching the live stream, that you could pose questions directly to the board, uh, and I will read those when we get to the public comment on item nine. Uh, before I open it up to the board, Mr. Ramud, I had a, a couple of clarifying questions, if you don't mind.
Sure.
The first is that you said that 3% of our budget, uh, in terms of the budget drivers is special education, and 76% is, um, salaries and benefits, but that 3% of special education is really for out-of-district placements, correct? It does not include the staffing in district and, or occupational therapy and teachers and instructional aides and all of that for special education, correct?
That is correct, Dr. Soson. We separated out the added district tuition, uh, which is the way the accounting code is structured, but yes, in the overall structure of the budget, all the staffing includes both general ed and special ed and instructional aides, et cetera.
And I believe that number approaches 20%, if we include both, uh, in-district services as well as out-of-district services for special education, is that correct?
That is absolutely correct, it's within that ballpark, yes, Dr. Soson.
Okay, great, thank you. And then on slide number- And then on slide number 13, you outlined a lot of the highlights that the executive county superintendent applauds us for with regard to very low administrative costs per student and per pupil costs. You didn't read the first bullet, which I would, I would like you to read because I think that is the, is very important. But with, with all of those things that you, that you said, it does come back to bite us in the butt a little bit because we are operating in a very lean, very, very lean way, which a lot of our districts in Somerset County have, and throughout the state have not been. But when we get state aid cuts, it really impacts immediately staff and students. So I do want to point that out to the public. When we were going through the process last year, a lot of people were saying, well, cut administration, cut administration. We're already third in the state of K through all districts. And so it becomes very, very difficult to do that because we've already done it over the years. If you wouldn't mind reading that first bullet, which I think is pretty important.
Sure, yeah, I apologize for that. The first bullet is despite a significant reduction in state aid, the district continues to provide a highly effective, thorough and efficient education.
Right, thank you for that. Okay, I will open it up to the rest of board members for any questions that they have, either on your presentation or on the budget in general at this time. Jane, I see your hand, thank you.
Mr. Mahmud, I just wanted to clarify regarding the cost for tuition for charter schools. Those are for out of, out of district charter schools, correct?
Actually, there are charter schools that some are in, actually, some are in town, right? We have charter schools that are local and charter schools that are, so it's a combination of both, Ms. Stats, but generally speaking, it's charter schools versus public schools. And we have to set aside money on the public school side to fund some of these charter schools.
I think technically they are considered public schools, but, but there are some that are out of district, some that are out of district. And they're not, they're not for special needs children, correct?
Correct, that is correct, Ms. Stats.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions on the presentation or the budget in general? Seeing none, and we are not going to vote on it for a little bit to allow for potential public comment, we'll move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. We are going to start the superintendent's report with the school safety data system report that we are mandated to report out on. Ms. Medley, our director of guidance, will do that. And this reporting period is from September 2019 to December 2019. So I've just placed that up on the screen and Ms. Medley will take over.
Thank you, Dr. Antunes. So I just want to go over some highlights from the report for this reporting period. First of all, to just draw your attention, we have had a decrease over prior years in HIB alleged incidents with an increase overall in programs completed and trainings completed. So a few things to just sort of point out as highlights for, for the program. We typically take a look at our elementary schools to see that our trainings and programs are consistent across our six elementary buildings. And we see on the top line here with Amsterdam Elementary that the trainings and programs are a little lower than our other schools. And part of that is because we had a, our counselor at that school, who is the only counselor in the building, and also our HIV specialist was out on a medical leave. And, and then actually, I was filling in for a little while there in the fall, but we have now hired somebody, we actually transferred someone. So that should look up as we go through the rest of the year. The other thing is that at the high school, we see that there were zero programs completed. These are typically prevention programs that look like assemblies, different programs, our student assistance counselors running conjunction with, and with payment from, or financial support from municipal alliance and outside agencies. And most of those programs do take place in the spring. And we had a few in January and February. So those are not reflected in those first four months of school, but it doesn't mean that we, we didn't have them. And unfortunately, with the current situation, our numbers will probably look a little bit different than they typically do when I come back and do the report in the summer about what happened this spring. So you can see the totals down here at the bottom for our alleged HIBs, confirmed HIBs, the training, so that would be anything for our, for anyone on our staff, including support staff and our cafeteria workers, maintenance, custodial, everybody included in that, and our programs completed. So we are, our overall, our HIB incidents are down from last year when you take a look at the same numbers from last year. So, and we, hopefully, we anticipate that our numbers will continue to stay down as we continue on through the spring and our online learning platform.
I'm not sure if any board members have any questions from Ms. Medley?
I don't see any.
Okay, so, thank you, Ms. Medley. We appreciate the, the report.
You're welcome.
Okay, I will continue with our superintendent's report, if that is okay with you. Dr. Swasan?
Please, Dr. Antunes, continue.
Okay. The high school, the Hillsborough Middle School Band needs our help and the help of the community. Our Wind Ensemble is one of five finalists in the Rutgers Battle of the Bands competition and needs your vote to win a VIP trip to campus to perform at a Rutgers football halftime show this fall. You can vote once per day from now until May 17th, and every vote, every day counts. So please check out their performance and cast your vote at www.rubattleofthebands.com. www.ru, as in Rutgers University, battleofthebands.com. So, wanted to touch upon subscription busing. Mr. Mahmud talked about it in the budget. And while we continue our virtual teaching and learning environment, we're actively working on reentry plans as well as on our typical reopening processes. One of those processes involves subscription busing for the 2021 school year. Be on the lookout for initial communication, which is scheduled to be released this Friday, May 1st. The interest form is due on or before Friday, May 29th. So there's a month, essentially a month to get us your interest form. And the first payment is scheduled for Tuesday, June 30th. So there's another month. So this Friday will be the first communication. I will also likely put that out in the weekly school messenger as well. And then we'll have information on the website. I'd also like to talk about a collaboration with the Hillsborough Y. While we don't have all of the logistics at the moment, we're really excited to share that we'll be collaborating with the Y on distributing produce and other food items to those students and families eligible for free and reduced nutritional services. There will be additional information forthcoming and we're excited to be collaborating with the Y in this endeavor. Also, as many of you may be aware, kindergarten registration was postponed in March. However, we have rescheduled it for May 5th through May 15th. Correspondence from elementary schools will be out this week if you have already pre-registered. And if you're seeking information about how to register your child for kindergarten for the 2021 school year, please go ahead and visit our website because the information is up. I'd also like to point out and thank our budget managers and of course, Mr. Mahmud and Ms. San Giuliano for, for putting together this final budget for the board to deliberate on and discuss. And I want to just point out again that all of the discussion among superintendents and certainly in Somerset County, but truly across the state, as well as with executive county superintendents and the Department of Ed, is about a surprising, so to speak, reduction in state aid that may come due to the COVID, COVID-19 pandemic. And so we needed to present this budget as per the law. We have to do it within a timeframe and we needed to do so this evening. However, it's important to note that based upon what might be coming down the road, which we don't have a crystal ball, we don't know. We just wanted to put it out there that things can happen once we hear back from the state. So we've got, we feel really proud of this budget, feel really good recommending it and presenting it to the board and the public and are, again, willing to take any questions or whatever Dr. Swasan would like to do. That is the end of my superintendent's report to me.
Thank you, Dr. Antunes. I also wanted to just add my thanks to the staff for the, for the budget presentation and all of the work on the budget. I also wanted to thank all of our staff in the district for their ongoing work to ensure that students succeed at distance learning. I know it's been a challenge and with every week, there's more challenges, but there's also more really good stories and we're getting emails from parents detailing the efforts of, of the teachers. I'd also like to thank parents for their support during this, this time, the support of the schools, the administration, specifically the teachers and the other staff too, and working with your children. These are truly unprecedented times and the guidance and support that you're providing to your children, being there as basically substitute teachers, is really unprecedented as well. And I know that there have been struggles and victories and some really good memes across Facebook with lots of appreciation being said for the, for the teachers, for what the teachers do. And I know that everybody's anxious to get back to, to normal. You know, obviously, we're taking our, our guidance from the governor here. We're out until at least May 15th. We're not sure if we'll return to in-person learning this year, but whenever that does happen, I'm sure that everybody will be very happy to be back. The students, the staff and the, and the parents will be happy as well for, for some normalcy. So with that, I will open it up for committee meeting reports. Can I ask Mr. Gillette to go first?
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, so operations, you know what? I forgot something. I'm going to go for my other glasses. There you go. All right, operations met on April 15th. We had a number of items on the agenda. We reviewed the two policies that you see on the agenda for tonight. We both, we gave both policies our endorsement. We had discussion about cafeteria services, including the delivery of meals to the students who qualify for free and reduced lunch and also whether or not the, all of the contract, contractual items in the, in the contract with Sedexo will be met. It's a little complicated, so I'm not going to go over it all now, but there's a, there are different items in there that, that are always met. Everything's fine as long as they're providing lunches and a la carte items and people are buying them. When that doesn't happen, it throws the contract into an area that we've never seen before. So there's some discussion with that, but nothing to get too worried about. We, we talked about what Mr. Mahmud already highlighted today, the, the resurfacing of the track and the tennis court to be done this summer. And we're going to authorize, I guess, we're going to authorize the withdrawal from the capital reserve tonight, at tonight's meeting, and that goes towards that. We talked about the budget, which we're going to vote on tonight. We had an update from our architect on the projects that have already been started for the, the past, during the December referendum. We talked about potentially, and not potentially, but refunding some of the money that's already been paid for the Children at Play program. We also talked about revenue that might be lost from Catholic charities who rents our spaces to run the aftercare program. Let's see, what else we got? And I think, I think that was about it. Everything else was inconsequential, so I'm going to wrap it up there. But the, the meeting minutes are online for board members to read.
I believe you're muted, Dr. Swasan?
Yes, I am. Can I ask Mrs. Hart to give the Education Committee minutes next? Thank you.
Okay, the Education Committee needed, met on April 15th. We had a very robust discussion on a number of issues. We started with the policies that you're going to see on the agenda for tonight. Going over them very quickly, there were policies about the school year and the school day that we didn't get to, but we moved forward for the policy because they're basically confirming what we do already now. In relation to administration of medicine, that policy basically adds hydrocortisone sodium succinate as an administrative issue for school nurses, similar to the way epinephrine is currently administered with the assistance of school nurses in emergency situations. So that policy is on for first reading tonight as well. And a policy on health and physical education was placed on the agenda. Now, this is a curricular issue because it affects the health and wellbeing of students. And what it does is basically include three additional curricula areas. One being the history of disabled people, one being the history of LGBT persons, and finally, financial literacy. So those were added to our policy on health and physical education, policy number 2422. And that was approved by our group. And moving right along from policies, we had a lengthy discussion about the budget and we were basically satisfied with the budget. We asked our questions and we moved on to a discussion about the transitional primary program, also known as TP in our district. And we were presented with information that came from two of our elementary school principals through our acting assistant superintendent for curriculum to recommend eliminating the TP program. And currently, we only have students to be placed in potentially one class. Part of the problem with the program over the years was it went from a program that was in every school to a program that was in some schools to a program that would now be in one school. And over the years, there was some falloff from children's parents who didn't want to take their kid out of the home school and move them into first grade despite the recommendation for TP. And this year, it was additionally complicated by the fact that the testing for youngness usually takes place in April. Obviously, there's not going to be any way for us to get that testing done. So in the interest of equity and making sure that every student is treated alike, we've decided to eliminate the program for this year. And the children who would otherwise have been placed in that program will go into grade one where their teachers will provide differentiated instructions if they feel that that is necessary. And we had a very lengthy discussion actually about the benefit of TP. Our board has been talking about the TP program since at least 2008 that I could remember. And every year, it has, you know, become less and less of a program. So we're going to give this a try. If anybody has any comments on it, they are welcome to do so. But I think that, you know, this was a recommendation that was brought to us by two very experienced principals and very experienced curricular people up and down the line. And we even benefited by having a former first and kindergarten and first grade teacher on our committee. on our committee, as well as a parent of a kindergarten student on our committee. So we had a very robust discussion about that. And honestly, at this point, I personally believe we should be discussing full-day kindergarten rather than maintaining this program, which doesn't exist in many other schools anywhere. So the committee was in agreement in that program that we do that for this year. Our second controversial discussion, or maybe controversial discussion, is the elimination of advanced math and advanced literacy in grade six. This was also a recommendation from our literature and math supervisors. They felt, once again, that differentiated instruction can manage the needs of our advanced students. Over the years, there has been a lot of discussion about this. And this is an issue also of test administration for this program, but we're not eliminating it for this year. We're going to hold off on doing it and have more discussion about it. Over the years, I have heard much discussion from parents who are concerned that children get tested in sixth grade and get placed on a route from which they can't fear and that new kids coming into the district cannot enter. So again, I think a little bit more discussion is necessary on this subject. And as we said, we weren't planning on doing anything about this for another year, so we have plenty of time for further discussion about this. Good news, our summer credit advancement program, if we're not canceled for the summer, has enough registration for all of the proposed classes to run. I hope that remains true since the last update on it, but my last update on it was Friday of this past week. And all of our math classes and the additional elective classes have enough kids to run. So now we just need the governor to tell us if school's gonna be open because honestly, these, the rigor of these classes would not work well with online administration. And then finally, you know, we started to have a minor discussion about graduation dates for future years. And we are scheduled for 2021 at the Rutgers Athletic Center. And what is happening this year is still a fluid issue. So that's the Education Committee meeting for this month.
Okay. Does anybody have any, well, I guess we'll take HR and governance and then we'll open it up for everything, if that's okay with everybody. Okay. Chris, would you do HR? Mr. Paulsfer?
Certainly. Thank you, Dr. Swanson. The HR committee met on Thursday, April 16th. We had a relatively short agenda for this meeting. We continued our ongoing discussion about the budget. There's several items that we had been discussing and Mr. Mahmood and Ms. Angelo Liano presented the latest information from them and we discussed all that and provided input that led to what we'll be reviewing and voting on tonight. We briefly covered some personnel matters. We discussed some policies. We have an update to Policy and Regulation 1581, which speaks to domestic violence handling within the district. And also two new policies regarding postnatal accommodations for, that's Policies 342113 and Policy 442113. That would be for teaching staff and support staff, the two different, same policy, but two different groups within a policy book. We also discussed compensation for staff members functioning in limited roles and we need to wait for guidance from the state and/or the executive county superintendent on that before we take any action. So we had a discussion about that, but we need to wait for more guidance. And that was the end of our meeting. Short and sweet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paulsfer. The Governance Committee met on Tuesday of last week to basically review all of the budget input that all of the other committees had. That was our major agenda item. And we also discussed the reentry plan. And as Dr. Antunes said, we were, she reported that there'll be a countywide reentry plan when we are given the go-ahead from the governor to return to in-person learning. We were notified that there was supposed to be a visit from the Director of the Division of Agriculture to observe our grab-and-go procedures for free and reduced lunch distribution, but that didn't happen because he couldn't make it on the day. I'm sure that'll happen another, another day. And then we discussed effects that us not being in school would have on the budget, on this year's budget, that may roll over into next year's budget. And that was it for governance. So now I will open it up to discussion, board discussion, questions on any of the committees that reported out. Mrs. Treheal?
So I had just a few questions about the process with respect to TP and the advanced math and literacy classes, specifically why the TP program is being recommended for elimination without prior public discussion and whereas the advanced literacy, sixth grade, math and literacy is being recommended to be postponed a year so that we can receive input because, yes, that's my question.
Thank you. Dr. Feltrey, would you like to take that or Mrs. Hoss? I think I probably.
Well, I mean, I'll start if Kim wants to jump in as well. I mean, quite frankly, the fate of the TP program, as I said, has been discussed since at least 2008, 2009. It has been fading out over several years. You're well aware of the budget cuts that took place last year where periods of, you know, various classes were, you know, enlarged because of budget problems. And, you know, everybody has always been on a review of existing programs that are not living up to the, you know, the expected need. We have been, ever since we went from six to four to three to two to one, the needs of the students have been met. That's always been our first priority. And quite honestly, I think, you know, back in 2008 and 2009, there were a lot of parents who came running to the school district and were present at our budget hearings to advocate on behalf of the program. And at least I, as a board member, have not heard that kind of advocacy in many years. So I would like, you know, I would like the administration to comment if there's been any, you know, additional commentary. But honestly, we've had a lot of kids who qualified for TP who were not interested in going if they had to go to a different school. So it just seems to me that, you know, the level of interest in the program has declined and the needs of the students have been met in other manners. And, you know, I think we had, you know, a very good discussion among people who really know a lot about that. And the recommendation came from our administration and elementary school principals. And it's really not for us to second-guess their recommendation, you know, as it goes. And, you know, as far as giving time for the other discussion, the other discussion, you know, we have time to do it. We're, we're doing just the opposite. We're putting, we're putting an opportunity out there. We're talking about it. We'll talk about it again. Kim?
I'm not sure I have much more to add, except for with TP, the testing is also another component in addition to the fact that parents have opted to not send their children to TP from other schools. We now, with the flexible learning, run into the impossibility of testing. The testing has to be done in person. It can't be done virtually. So there's no way to accurately assess these students for whether or not they'd be eligible for TP. And with regards to advanced math and literacy, it's almost the opposite. To make this kind of a change right now while we're on virtual learning, when scheduling is happening within the next couple of weeks poses more challenges than waiting. We needed to do this a couple of months ago, which would have been the intent to start the discussion, but COVID-19 happened.
So just, and if I can follow up, I guess my concern with respect to, I mean, I'm not as concerned with advanced math because it does give parents the opportunity to give input, but with respect to TP, I feel that it was, it was a surprise to me. And actually, I heard about it first on Facebook and I was surprised that that information was being circulated. And so I feel like at least that little discussion among some community members was that it was a done deal, whereas when I spoke with you, Lorraine, it was not a done deal until we decided on it today, I guess, with voting on the budget, which is fine. But I guess, although, like Judy, you said that people have been talking about TP, and I don't really feel strongly about TP per se, just this whole process, that parents were not even informed that this might be a possibility so that they could express their opinion. Does that make sense? Like, that's my concern. That's my, so that's why I was asking with the process.
Yeah, I understand your point. I was actually surprised you told me it was on Facebook. And I went on Facebook. I tend not to do that. I've been incredibly busy lately, so I haven't been able to even when people send me things to look at. But, you know, it is unfortunate that it got out to the public this way. Obviously, this is a discussion, as Judy said, that has been ongoing for many years. The numbers have been dwindling. Last year, I think there were something like 30 kids who were, proposed it, who didn't select it because they didn't want to leave their schools and it was mostly age-related in terms of, you know, birthdays and not necessarily just developmental. I mean, I think it was a nice program and was utilized a lot when my kids were in school. I think it has been going down, especially since so many, you know, that there's been sort of a pressure to not use it as a way of getting out of a year of daycare. But, you know, I think it is not really tied to the budget. The teacher, the teaching position is in the budget. If there were an outcry from, you know, if there was a determined need, then it could be implemented. But we have two, you know, two of our most senior administrators, educators, principal teachers, telling us that this is not something that is serving the needs. We have equity issues and this, and this specific year, we also have the testing issues. So, you know, I think that, you know, if there wasn't a year to cut it, this is the year, we can always bring it back if there's a perceived need in the future. That is something that, you know, we can do and people can obviously, you know, comment on it at any time.
Yeah. Lorraine, if I may?
Sure. Go ahead, please.
Yeah. And I'm sure this will be handled very well by the principals of the schools from which kids had maybe been, you know, kids' parents had been thinking about placing them in TP. I have every faith in our elementary principals to handle this, you know, once they are sure that we, as a board, are going through with this. So, you know, I'm sure if there's any discussion to be had, it should be had with the principals of the elementary schools. And they can assure the parents about how the needs of their children will be met outside of a formal TP class. So, you know, whoever's on Facebook discussing it should really contact the principal of their elementary school.
Great. Anybody else? John, John Oliver texted me, so keep beat everybody. If you want to, if you want to comment, I don't see you on video right now, but hopefully you're there. Okay. We'll wait for, John is rejoining. Gene, why don't you go ahead? Gene, please.
Thank you, Dr. Swanson.
I'm sorry. Thanks, Lorraine.
Go ahead, John.
So, you know, I just, to the TP, I had, two of my children have gone through the TP program. My second child, I was humbled in the fact that I was against her going into TP and went against the recommendations of Dr. Malady and was humbled by the fact that she was making the right decision and I was making the wrong decision. So she benefited greatly, as both my children did, from the TP program. However, that being said, I'm going to rely on the experts to tell me that the demand really isn't there for the program. Also, the testing for it is gonna be inadequate for that placement as a result of the virus. So I'm obviously in favor of it being removed at this point. And again, we could always revisit it. I have the confidence in our administration that if they see the need for that to come back, that we could revisit it at another time. But as someone, as a parent who's been through the TP program with two of his three children, it does have great benefits, but gonna have to go on the recommendations from our administration.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. With stats, please.
Generally, I agree with, ironically, I don't know, maybe it's contradiction, I agree with both Gene and John, Mr. Treheal and Mr. Oliver. But I am concerned about how there really is not much opportunity for parents to weigh in on this. I mean, it has been mentioned, this has been discussed for several years, but I don't think people were aware that this was on the chopping block. Now, but having said that, because of the testing situation, I certainly understand why it's probably a good idea at least to not offer TP this year and maybe revisit it next year. I am concerned that the solution is to expect the first-grade teachers to provide differentiated instruction. That seems to be the panacea for so many things and it's, does create a lot of, lot more work for teachers. And that also came up with the elimination of the advanced math and literacy courses in grade six. Again, let's, if that does happen, okay, then the teachers will provide differentiated instruction. Fortunately, we have plenty of time to discuss that. But that does, that is a concern of mine, especially when we've reduced the gifted and talented program. And, you know, also, we, I, I'm glad that Judy pointed out, Ms. Hoss pointed out that, you know, there is a lot of flexibility once, if we do have those children placed in advanced classes, there is no flexibility for other students to be part of that until, or be part of any advanced program, until they reach the high school. But with or without that, that's something we can look into to not have it so rigid that, okay, whatever you test into for sixth grade or not, look into the, have more flexibility as far as, I guess it's a test they take to be placed in the algebra, algebra ahead of time, to just look into that. And another thing I wanted to bring up is something that I've mentioned before, is the advanced, the honors courses that are offered in the summer in math. Based on the numbers, it looks like there's probably still a lot of other students that have doubled up in the past that want, are still, were still not meeting their needs. Again, maybe they weren't able to do it because of the time or the cost. And I still want us to consider allowing them to double up, at least offer one additional section of algebra to honors to accommodate those students that want to have the rigor of having two honors math classes and the fun of having two honors math classes.
Yes, fun indeed. I would find it fun. So I am one of, I am one of the people who have been advocated for. for a different path forward for the advanced math, as people may have heard me say from time to time. It's not until high school that many parents and students realize that the choice that was made for them, or, you know, or whatever, back in fifth grade, affects their ability to take not only advanced math courses, but also, and honors math courses, but also honors science classes in the high school, which I know Dr. Feltry and I have had many spirited discussions over the years about trying to rectify that situation. I think this is a very good move to do so. I'm appreciative. I actually advocated during the committee meetings to see if we could do it next year. But unfortunately, the Iowas have already been taken and plans are already in place. So, and we can't, you know, sort of readminister, redo the testing. But next year, if we even afford with this plan, then all students in sixth grade would take the Iowas not advanced students to be able to determine what their placement would be in seventh grade for math. So, and I appreciate very much your comments there, Ms. Stats. I saw Ms. Peltzer ahead. Did you want to comment?
I just want to follow up on that. Regardless of what we do, if we eliminate the advanced classes in sixth grade or not, I would just want more flexibility as, for lack of a better word, whatever tracking is done, that there's more flexibility for a student to move up early.
Yes, I absolutely agree. And I think that's part of the plan moving forward. Chris Peltzer, Ms. Peltzer?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Swanson. I just wanted to speak briefly about the discussion, the ongoing discussion about TP. While certainly this late in the game, having recommendations from the committee could have left out input from parents who would have had kids, or potentially had kids in TP in the coming year, this has actually been a very long discussion. I mean, probably, Greg, you can remember this, probably 10 or more years ago, we've been talking about TP. And there has been a sort of long, slow shift to questioning whether TP is the right thing. And I think while we, this may be the, may have been the tipping point where we finally switched to the education committee and the board recommending, and the administration recommending not having it, it's not like there haven't been plenty of opportunities and actual input from parents over the years as this discussion's been ongoing. So I certainly think there has been ample opportunity for parental input, albeit not the parents who may be affected in the coming year, but certainly parents in and around the program have given their input over the years. And that's been part of why the feeling has been shifting more towards not having that program. And I think we really may have just reached the tipping point this year, but it's not a sudden change at all without having had a lot of public input along the way.
Great. Mrs. Stats?
But like you guys have said, this has been a discussion for many years. So, you know, people might have, I can understand anyone. I mean, I certainly would be complacent, knowing this has been a discussion for many years. There was no sense of urgency, though. There was, it was never said, oh, this is going to happen, or even, this is going to happen in this year. This is the first, this has come about. So that's my concern about the lack of opportunity for parents to really speak up, knowing it was going to happen this year. But I still go back to, because of the issue with testing, I still support this decision because the logistics of it probably makes it impossible. But maybe to revisit the possibility of having TP for the following school year.
Anybody else before we move on to the public input? Okay, so I will read the public input statement. We very much welcome input from the public during virtual board meetings. There will be one time that the public is invited to submit questions or comments. Members of the public may comment about any item that is listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes or may choose to discuss any topic. Before you submit your question or comment, you will be asked to revise your name and address. Please understand that our virtual public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there is a misunderstanding or an accuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. New Jersey statutes do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public sessions. First, I did get a public comment. So I will read that, and then the board, I will open it to the board to discuss the action agenda. This comment is from Sean Kavanaugh on 32 Scott Drive. Good evening. Has it been discussed what could happen with Spirit Night, junior and senior proms, and the graduation ceremony at HHS? Should we be online learning for the rest of the year? Could December or January, when college winter breaks, are be considered to have those events since most of this year's seniors will be in town? And they could come back for any or all of those if things are back to normal by then? Also, this may be water under the bridge by now, but with the budget development happening during COVID-19, I don't think some in the public knew that it was going on. So they may not have had an opportunity to had it, to provide a feedback on it if they wanted something different than was proposed in the tentative budget. It's not the talk of the town at this time of year, like it was for last year, for obvious reasons. Lastly, I saw on the agenda that Mrs. Zaminsky from Hillsborough High School is retiring. I had her, and she's great, wishing her all the best in her retirement. That is the only public comment I have received thus far. I will check back if there are other board member comments before we close public comment. In the meantime, anything that we get in after I close public comment will be on next meeting agenda as correspondence. Does the board have any comment on the action agenda at this time? Mr. Peltzer?
Actually, not so much the action agenda, but a comment that Mr. Mahmood made earlier, and also Dr. Antunes. In the event that there is a change in our funding after we post this budget, because I believe the state budget, at least last I heard, is August. And so certainly, we can get funding changes then. Could you just give us an idea of what kind of processes we would go through if there were meaningful cuts after we've already locked in the budget and are proceeding through the upcoming year?
Sure. I mean, I could start, Dr. Antunes, if you'd like, and if you want to join. Thank you, Mr. Peltzer. I think one of the first things that we want to put on the table is that while we're, we definitely want to do the withdrawal from cap reserve for the track and for the tennis courts, if, in fact, we get information prior to the awarding of that bid and there is a chance that they'll allow us to balance our budget with reserve money, we'd bring that to the board to have a discussion about. I think that that would be one of the things that we would be, you know, certainly looking at, that's a million three. And also, I think, Mr. Peltzer, what we'd have to do is come back to the table, as we did in committee structure, and start to talk about what that looks like, depending on the number. You know, we don't know what that would mean in terms of, is it, you know, a possible reduction of a million? Is it $100,000? I mean, that would play a significant role in the volume of a cut. But I think that we have been talking a little bit about next steps, and it may be just the planning stages within the board. And then ultimately, if there is a cut, we'll have to absorb it somehow. I just don't see our system, with losing 56 positions last year, enduring another cut of any magnitude. I would, you know, appeal to our legislators and whoever to say, Hillsborough is not one of those places that we can endure a cut of any kind. But I know that, you know, that we have to also be realistic about our approach. But we do have some things in mind as far as the next steps. We just don't know what it looks like. And I think Dr. Antunes would agree that we've been talking about this for the last couple of weeks. We hear, but there's nobody who announced. The one thing is, nobody announced any reduction at this point. But the inevitable is that after August, when the municipal budgets are passed, things can change, and the state budget. So, but nothing was announced as far as cuts. That's why we're presenting this budget. We were hoping that Hillsborough goes unscathed and that we could balance the budget. And maybe it's the following year that we were, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Mahmood. I guess my concern is important for the public to understand what the situation might be for the board and for the district if that funding changes, late in the game in terms of our budget calendar versus the state's budget calendar being set in August. It was quite a while ago now, I believe, probably eight to 10 years ago, that, if I remember correctly, the state, well, the word they used at the time was delayed. One of our support payments. And eventually, it was never paid. And so we were forced at that time to, you know, find places in the budget to make up for the money that was supposed to show up that didn't. And I think it's important that the public understand that we're going to be between the proverbial rock and a hard place if there is a funding cut after we've locked in our budget, you know, in the August timeframe, as it were, when the state sets their budget. So important for the public to understand where we are.
Okay, I had Mr. Hill and Mr. Gillette. Mrs. Tridio, did you have something?
I just had a question on the policies. Would now be a good time to talk about them? Or are we going to go, like, are we going to do that afterwards? The policies for first reading?
No, you can discuss that now. We're going to move the whole agenda as one item, so it would be best to discuss that now.
Oh, okay. So I just, I had sent you and Lisa some comments about the policy, some questions. So would it be just easier for me to just kind of summarize them now?
Certainly.
Okay. So the first, the policy under education, I believe, 2422, when it was, I think there's just some typos in terms of items 17 and 18, where it says history of disabled persons, and then 18 was just like LGBT persons. It didn't say history of, I think?
You are correct.
Okay. For policy, 8210, there was, I was confused as to what was original and what was the new policy that we're reading for first reading, because some of the items that were in the original policy didn't show up as, wait, so new text is bold, and then anything that was old should be either struck out. And I didn't see that, so I was very confused trying to go back and forth between the two. Does that make sense? I don't know if you had a chance to take a look at that?
Yes.
I feel like a lot of the policies were inconsistent that way, that the original, and I don't normally go back and compare the two, but the reason I did for this one was because there was like an end bracket that wasn't closed. So I went to see what the original one was, and I went to go see what the, I think it was an education committee, what the policy was. So I feel like there's like some discrepancies there. Like, I don't think it's a big deal, but I.
Yeah, we'll have Kate, Mrs. John Estey look at it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, on my 8210, there's crossed out and there's bolded.
Right, but it's not consistent with what's on the website for 8210?
Okay, okay. Well, we'll look at it. It's only first reading, so we can look at it so that everything is.
Same thing for 8220, and same thing for 7243. And so for the 7243, there's actually some significant changes. Specifically, there was a part about the change order involving additional costs will be submitted. And the original policy had the superintendent responsible for change orders and the final recommendation. But the new policy for first reading has changed it to the business administrator. So I was just wanting to understand why that recommendation was made. There was also like a couple of other things also that went from who was responsible.
Mr. Mahmood, did you have any comments there? Or Mr. Gillette, that's your committee?
Not really. I think that both Dr. Antunes and I and Mr. Hill, you know, we're going to be a part of all the construction projects. I think I'm going to live it more because of just the scope of the Buildings and Grounds Department. And I would be more involved in the money aspect of it. Typically speaking, we're not big on change orders in Hillsborough. When a contractor bids on something, we hold them responsible. A change order only means they're going to draw down more money. That's not typical. We historically don't do that, and we hold them tight to that. So I think just the business administrator's involvement on the financial end, knowing exactly where we stand is probably why it was recommended that way. But I work in conjunction with the superintendent and for the superintendent. So in essence, if there's anything that comes up, I will discuss it with Dr. Antunes, and we work together collaboratively.
Thank you very much. I just reminded myself of one more question. So in the past, where we've had construction projects, does the board ever hire, like, an independent? I guess, I'm not sure how to describe, like, an independent construction manager, somebody who like, like almost like a site, actually, it's not like a site foreman. It's more like somebody who is like our independent, kind of like review person to make sure that everything that the architect designed is actually implemented by the contractor, given that, like, we're not, you know, construction experts?
So what we typically do is, it's an interesting question. What we typically do is we have, the architect becomes like the GC for the district, and they manage the projects. They manage the timing, they manage the quality, they manage the specifications. So our projects are clearly specked out. I think when we, and I wonder if part of your question is evolving from sort of some issues that came up with the ESIP program. I think that that was, I believe, some of the logistical issues with that were the expertise in the digital remotes and that whole, you know, third, we did have like the BPU, but moving forward, the projects that we are doing, especially this summer, are pretty straightforward. We have exactly what's expected of the roofers, of the HVAC unit at the high school, and of the asphalt. So I think that we're going to manage it pretty tight with the architect without that need for an additional independent person for cost. If we get technical at it moving forward and our projects become more difficult, we can always revisit that and talk about it in operations. But right now, these projects, when I say are simple, we know what our specifications are, and we can hold the contractors accountable pretty specifically with these. And we can see them. These are easy for us.
Okay, thank you.
Gillette?
Just a couple of things real quick. And then I have to find the cable to plug in my laptop. So this has to be real quick. I believe that the last time when the state withheld an aid payment or a partial aid payment, they tied it to how much money you had in reserves. In other words, they weren't going to withhold more than you can make up for in reserves. Districts that had projects that needed to be done, worthy projects that were necessary, that encumbered that money and spent it the week before, were okay. Districts that were holding that money because they had something that had to be done, you know, maybe in a month, were in trouble. So I think it's a, it would be a good idea to go through and get moving quickly on the summer athletic projects. Those are necessary projects, or else we don't have a track, we don't have tennis anymore. So we need to do, so that's the first thing. The second thing is, since we're going to move the agenda all at one time, I'd ask Mr. Mahmood to record a no for me on policy 2422. You writing that down? I'm in 2422. I have the same concerns that our policy advisor, Strassmay, has about this policy, that it is too detailed. I've never seen a policy with detailed curriculum like this. So I'm still doing some investigate, you know, some research on it. This is first reading. If I change my mind, I'll come back and vote yes another time, the second time. But I'm going to be ignoring that. All right, now I'm going to go find the cable.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Any other comments on the action agenda? Okay, we actually did get another, oh, Mr. Tridio, did you have something?
Yes, just a quick question. Are we voting on the budget as one with the action agenda? Or are we doing two separate votes?
Two separate votes.
Thank you.
Okay, so before I close public comments, I got two other, two other public comments. One is from Alicia Gabor-Bailis of Puff Lane. And she is writing, please consider having pullout classes and not simply just in-class differentiation for math and literacy in sixth grade and lower. As I have noted before, at least one elementary school had pullout for reading, and it was wonderful in first grade. If certain schools have more of a need for TP, you could consider offering full-day kindergarten there first if space allows. Thank you. The second is from Jennifer McKenna of Valenour Road. Hello, I started viewing the meeting when Mrs. Haas was talking about a policy regarding administration of hydrochlorazone succin, a medication that my seven-year-old first-grade student receives. I was just wondering if more information could be shared about this. Thank you. So, Mrs. Feltry, if I can ask you to follow up on those after the meeting? That would be great. Dr. Feltry, sorry. Okay, any other, I'm going to close public comment then. Anything else before we vote? First, we will vote on the budget as presented by Mr. Mahmood, and then we will vote on cooperate in education and human resources agendas as one item, as one vote. And you could do exactly what Mr. Gillette did, which is say yes except for this number, record me as an abstain or a no, whatever, at that point. Okay? All right, so with that, roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood, on the budget, please.
So I will take a motion in a second, Dr. Swanson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Pulsifer. Second? Thank you, Ms. Maroon. Okay, there you go.
Thank you so much. Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Hill?
Abstain.
Got it. And thank you. And Ms. Dr. Swanson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. So now I'll take the motion in a second on the whole of the action agenda for education, human resources, and operations. Do I have a motion?
Do you want me to make that recommendation, Dr. Swanson?
Oh, yeah, I guess so. Okay.
Dr. Antunes, can you please walk us through?
Sure. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the education, HR, and operations agenda as one motion as follows. Education 10.1 through 10.3, to motion to affirm the superintendent's harassment, intimidation, and bullying determination; motion to approve policies and regulations for first reading as stated; motion to approve the flexible learning plan, which is essentially our learning plan for virtual learning; 11.1 through 11.8, which is a motion to approve the retirements. And I'd like to point out Suzanne Wisnovsky, our reach teacher at Sunnymead School in Woods Road, who's been with us for 23 years, and Mrs. Zaminsky, a social worker at the high school, who's been with us for 29 years; motion to approve revised leaves of absences as stated; motion to approve revised long-term substitute and revised turnkey trainers; motion to approve a contract change as indicated, as well as the leave of, as well as leaves of absences; motion to approve appointments and policies and regulations for first reading as listed; and the app's agenda, 12.1 to 12.3, which is the monthly bills, a resolution for the capital reserve withdrawal that Mr. Gillette, Mr. Mahmood have spoken about, and a motion to approve policies for first reading as indicated. Thank you.
Okay. Now I will take the motion. Thank you, Dr. Antunes. Motion...
I'm moved.
Second?
Thank you, Dr. Harris. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood?
Surely. Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes, except for policy 7243, which is a no.
7243, thank you. And finally, Dr. Swanson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, we have no items for information. But I will take a motion for adjournment unless anybody has anything else.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Pulsifer.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody abstain, anybody oppose? Okay, thank you all very much, and thank you, Mr. Handler, for your assistance with the technology, for trying to get this live streaming up.